Good evening, everyone. We would like to call our August 22nd Fable City Council Meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all of those who are joining us in the audience. And those who are joining us remotely and by television, it's the first meeting of this new council, so welcome to my colleagues on City Council. At this time, I will ask that Pastor, okay, Pastor Angela Marks from Reconciling the World Ministries, if she would, come and give us our invocation. Ask that all would stand for the prayer immediately following, if we could repeat in unison the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, Pastor.
Good evening. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for your grace and mercy tonight as we assemble together to make decisions on behalf of our great city, the city of Fayetteville. Lord, we ask that you would guide this meeting with your wisdom, truth, and understanding. We pray for every city official, every citizen, and those that will stand and speak today. Lord, we pray that today's agenda will have perfect purpose to be for the growth and good of this city. Touch every heart on tonight, and may they be slow to speak and quick to listen. Order the steps of each and every decision that is made, and may everything be done with the spirit of justice. And may tonight's agenda be done according to your word in Micah 6 to 8. O people, you have told us what is good, and this is what you require for us to do what is right, to love mercy, to walk humbly with your God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Marks. So if you could just come to the podium, tell us a little bit about yourself and your ministry.
Good evening. My name is Angela Marks, and I am a member of Reconciling World Ministries, but I also am a children's pastor. And so I'm actually a, I say this, I'm a national and world-renowned children's pastor, that I travel throughout the nations and around teaching children and also doing that in our city. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you for what you do, and thank you for the prayer, wonderful prayer tonight. At this time, ask that former Councilmember Antonio Jones, if he and his family could meet us at the podium, or meet me at the podium?
Well, Dr. Jones, on behalf of a grateful council and on behalf of the 200-plus-thousand citizens we jointly represent, we would like to present to you the highest award that the city has for your service, stepping in at a time that was very important in our board. You came every week with your knowledge, with your game face, humble spirit. You added a lot of great acumen and points of view to the discussion. So, thank you for your service. And so, on behalf of the City Council and myself, reads as follows. On behalf of the Fable City Council, city employees and citizens of Fayetteville, North Carolina, our city key and corner proudly presented to Dr. Antonio B. Jones in grateful recognition for his devoted interest and unattiring commitment to the citizens of Fayetteville while serving with the Fable City Council for District 3, December 2021, July 2022. And your name, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. New council, congratulations to each of you. I want to just be very quick. First of all, District 3, city of Fayetteville, I've recorded a video on Facebook for the sake of time because I know your new council is dying to get to work quickly, so I don't want to take a lot of their time. But I want to acknowledge my family, District 3, the citizens, and of course, this council, very quickly. To my wife, Amisha, if you would just stand for just a moment. Just want to tell you thank you so much. I've been in different types of leadership roles all my life, and it requires a tremendous amount of sacrifice. And maybe about six, seven years ago, I had contemplated running, and I had to make a decision, and something she said was pray about it. And she said that because she knew at that time her husband had established something, which was, don't do anything without praying. And so, she knew, she heard that word, "I, I want to." And so, I did that, and I didn't run because my priorities at that time, and some may not understand, if you don't have children, it's not a knock, it's just you won't. My two young boys, who happen to have the same skin color as myself, being raised in a world that sometimes doesn't love them back. And so, I made a conscious decision to say, to serve the city in the capacity in which I believe it should, it takes a tremendous amount of time. And I was not willing to sacrifice that at that time at the expense of my two young boys. And so, I waited until the door opened, and that access came. It wasn't in my time. A lot of times, people say, you know what, it's God's will. Well, we can interfere with the will of God if we do what we want to do. So, and I'll say all of that to say this, when the opportunity arose, again, I presented it to you because I'm really big on family first, and you said, okay, now, now is the time. And so, things progressed, and they did. And so, I wanted to tell you thank you so much for all the nights that you saw me studying and reading and really, she knows whenever I do something, I give 110%. I just can't do it part of the way. And so, she saw that. She saw that her husband, who is a provider, I have to tell you this quickly as a man, to say, hey, honey, I have to step away from my job as a Realtor, regardless of what your thoughts are about a Realtor. I have a code of ethics that I adhere by. But to say, I need to step away because the city needs me. I need to do this. And you said, do what you need to do. And so, I want to just present you these really quickly to say thank you. I love you. Thank you, thank you. And quickly, again, District 3, I want to say thank you so much. I know it was a short period of time, and I, at some state, got cast into the fire extremely quickly. And for a lot of people, they would have burned, but I'm really used to serving under adverse conditions and not pressure because that's where I thrive. And so, I thank you for allowing me to have the opportunity to serve you, to serve in your neighborhoods and your community, and to hear statements such as, you know, when I've been in this neighborhood, or this neighborhood for 20-plus years, and I've never seen this much activity, meaning things being done, that resonates with me. That resonates with me. Because there are some things, of course, as much as I love this great council, there are some things I know I had to do on my own aside from getting those other five votes. And lastly, I just want to address, well, let me say this, District 3, continue to do what you did before. You call your representative, and representatives, we have one, thank you, sir, again, for your service. Make sure that you call, make sure that you email, keep doing the things that you were doing. And when you do it, you have nine other people who serve you. All 10 of these seats belong to you. And so, I just remind you that if something is going on, you see a motion that failed and is coming back, you galvanize as a district and reach into the other district and say, hey, what did you do during those times? And come together because it's one Fayetteville, it's one Fayetteville. Lastly, this is great council. I really want to say thank you so much. When I came on, it wasn't my nature to come on as a person that knows it all and just come on. I'm very observant, very keen, just used to high-level leadership, and you all embraced me. Any questions that I had, you answered them. And I know that I was sent for a reason. I often stated that I was a bridge, and that's what I was. Because at that time, some things were going on, perceptions were off, but guess what? We galvanized you all. We pulled together. We pulled together internally. We had those discussions. We had those crucial conversations. And we did a lot of great things, including a budget with no tax increases. I mean, I just look at those things, and I just say, thank you so much, each of you, for the opportunity that you have given me to establish relationships. All right? So, I thank you. And again, this is Dr. Jay. I'm not going anywhere. We have about 15 months, and I'll see you again. I just want to, if you see me tap out, it's not because I do not care about what's going on. We have some people that came. I want to acknowledge them, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, thank you.
Got you. Thank you, Councilmember Jones, former Councilmember Jones. All right. At this time, I'll go to Councilmember Hare and then Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. We, I'm saying, we, my church family, Kingdom Impact Global Ministries, we are having a Community Outreach Day this weekend, Saturday, the 27th, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Lot of school giveaways, a career area, the university is going to be there, Methodist College, Fayette Tech. Also, if you have not received any of your latest COVID shots, you will have an opportunity to receive those also. That will be, everything will be free, and that will be on Saturday, the 27th of August, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. And all, okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll leave it at there.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Hare. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to recognize two people out in the audience. We have a commission that you have put together about two years ago, two or three years ago, and it is the Millennial Commission. And we have one of our Millennial Commission members that is usually here, and he has a way overseas. And I would like to acknowledge Malik and Kat over there. If you could please stand up, show you true leadership. They have come to do his job while he is off supporting our country. So, thank you, and just wanted to acknowledge you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. All right, council, thank you. Millennial Council, keep up the good work. Millennial Commission. At this time, council, we'll move to the city manager's report, Mr. Hewitt. Okay, moving right along. Item 6.0 is the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to approve the agenda with the exception of item 10.03.
All right, it's motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. We're at the approval of the agenda, so it would be to remove item 9.01.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Oh, yes, yes. Councilmember Benevente, yes. Because 10.03, I think, was tied to something else, but you all can, Councilmember Benevente has spoken about 9.03.
So, I can amend it. So, yes, I'd like to amend my motion to remove items 9.01 in addition to items 10.0. Okay, items 9.01. Thank you.
And, okay, just 9.01. All right. So, it's motion on the floor by Councilmember Ingram to approve the agenda with the exception of 9.01, and seconded by Councilmember Benevente. Discussion on that motion. Counsel, I look to you for your votes. Those in favor of approval. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries, item 7.0. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull items 7.04 and item 7.07 for discussion.
Okay, for an up or down vote?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, it's a motion to approve consent with the exception of 7.04, 7.07, seconded by Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion to approve with those exceptions? Show of hands, those who are in favor. All right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. Motion carries, item 7.04. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to ask that we, I'd like to make a motion that we schedule this item in addition to the annexation request for a public hearing. Staff did state that they were giving me a public hearing date, but I would like to make a motion to do so. Do we have that date yet?
So, council, if the council is so inclined, you could set the public hearing for September the 26th, which is the fourth Monday in September.
Thank you.
Second, Mayor. Okay. All right. This is a motion to set the public hearing to the date stated, seconded by Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on that motion? Those in favor of motion, show of hands. All right, Madam Clerk, the motion carries unanimous. Item 7.07, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I expressed upstairs, that notably so, when we were talking about the shot detector technology, I was in favor of seeing what this looked like. But after research and gathering just information, I would like us to reconsider moving forward on this. I do understand that there are some councilmembers that will want to hear from our staff about the technology. But given the work that we are currently doing, I think moving forward on this, looking at peer cities like Charlotte, who had to pull theirs back, and Durham is just now implementing them, I would want to get more data on the technology and see best what works before we commit to this technology. And I would just would not want to do more harm than good at this point. It has been stated that the license plate readers are really good and work well, but they're, from my perspective, talking with community members, law enforcement, and non, I think we do best to reconsider this. Thank you. And I'll be prepared to make my motion after we hear from staff.
All right. Well, we, I'm sure we'll have some discussion on that, so I'll circle back to you on that. Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just a little bit different on the item. I would like to hear, I would like to let the presentation be made on this particular item. It's also my understanding that this is a little bit different from the initial, the initial technology that was brought to us, I don't know, several months ago, that our police department were going to look at and bring back to us. So, I would like to have a presentation given to this item tonight first.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
While I think staff can answer some general questions, we did not come prepared to do a full-blown presentation. As I think several members of council have talked, and their experience and what they've read, this does require probably a lot more time, do you have tonight, to talk about whether the technology has efficacy and whether it's right for our community. And Mr. Hare, there, if you have some questions, I'm sure that the department would be happy to come up and answer some of those. But given the complexity of it, probably we would request that we move this to your work session.
Yeah. And I think my concern was just to kind of give us, not just us, but the citizens, a little information on what this particular technology is about.
Yeah. Well, we'll do that. And Mr. Manager, you know, we've got to let council determine the path forward. I mean, I think we've been working on it a while. I guess we'll get the chief here to tell us about it. Yes, ma'am?
So, basically, our initiative was to try to find gunshot technology that is right for our community. And so, when we put the RFP out, it went out to any vendor who outlined what we needed. The initial one that we was reviewing, after we assessed it, they could not accommodate our needs. We drilled down, they're not out there in the community as much. But the secondary vendor, we know, has proven in other communities, other city, and they were the second one. That's why we chose that. We also made a phone call to that vendor to be able to do a presentation, if that's what you would want. But they would have to come back at another time. We'd have to figure out a schedule, maybe in your work session or something like that, to show you what they are saying they can do. But we also went to Winston-Salem and evaluated it as well.
Okay. And so, notwithstanding that, and I know, you know, possibly with some of the newer councilmembers, I know this has been something that council has been talking about for some time. In fact, that, you know, as we talk about reducing crime, we talked about technology with our cameras system. I understand there was a lot of thought and staff time been put into this. We budgeted this maybe budget before last. And so, I think it is incumbent upon us, council, you know, I fielded a lot of calls, shared with Councilmember Hare and some of the districts, from people who, you know, afraid to go out on the porch. One gentleman was shot by a stray bullet. Another shooting broke some other things in a separate incident just last week. There are multiple times that things are happening in these, in some of our communities, that by the time law enforcement responds the traditional way, you know, and so, the benefit of technology and this investment, I understand that one of these options had a way to partner with and connect to some of the, some of the camera systems that we have already, just to, just to give us an extra tool in the tool belt. Now, I know there were some questions about one of the specific vendors that had some questions and some unscrupulous alleged practices that they were doing, possibly about whether it was hot mics or something in the neighborhood.
Not sure about that, sir.
Yeah.
But they could not, the first vendor we chose had a lot of promises that we thought we were going with, but we weren't able to, we knew that we would not be our best choice for our community.
Right. So, counsel, it's your pleasure. I dispose of it. I'll go to Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, and then Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, for the audience and those who's watching, who may not be aware of what the gunshot detection is, can you kind of explain some of the benefits?
So, the benefit it is, is you establish a radius, like a one-mile, but up to three-mile radius in a community that has historical gunshot crimes, violent crime happening in that area. What it also does is to have a connection directly to our 911 center, some camera system, so that when the gunshot goes off, it's able to determine the different type of caliber of weapon that's going off compared to, it's just not a firecrackers or anything like that. And then, it also triggers the cameras at the same time to help the officers be able to determine when they're going, is there any evidence of what they're looking for as the gunshots are going off.
All right. Councilmember Benevente and then Hare, second round.
Could you tell us some of the cons to this particular technology?
I would, I don't, we don't have that. So, the cons, I am not quite sure in regards to the cons that we're looking at, in regards to maybe a, I'm not quite sure on the cons on that one.
Mr. Mayor, this technology as a whole has come under large scrutiny in a number of jurisdictions for basically being a bypass to people's Fourth Amendment constitutional rights. And at this point, I would ask that we move to a work, move this item to a work session in the future, so that our city attorney can take the time to look into this technology, give us an assessment, so that we're not putting Fable Police and the city of Fayetteville in jeopardy of additional lawsuits. Gunshot technology, at this point, is something that's been, has as low of an efficacy rate as 11% of the time. So, I think we do need to move this to a work session to learn more about it, its pros and cons.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Councilmember Thompson.
Chief, I believe that this technology is prevalent in Chicago, and it could probably be something we'd be more useful here in Fayetteville. My question is, what would be the response time once you got that technology to the 911 call center?
Unfortunately, there's no guarantee on what our response time is. It's supposed to help us out, one, deciphering what type of weapon, if there's a weapon, the timeline. It all depends on the availability, the officer, the distance of the officer, of course, and the information. Once the officer receives it, they're able to narrow it down. And then, if the camera triggers off and is connected to our 911 center, that's some more information that can help us have a direction of where it's coming from and where it's going. So, I can't give you a, hey, it's going to lower response time.
But you can't give me the bottom line, it's going to help reduce crime that we have here in Fayetteville.
I can't guarantee you that either, sir.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I made a motion in my statement.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear that. I heard you say recommend. I didn't hear you say I moved to, but.
Yes, sir. If it's appropriate, I'll go ahead and make that, renew my motion to move this item to a future work session.
You make, okay, so you make a motion, so you make a motion to move a table to a work session, Councilmember Benevente, seconded by Councilmember Ingram. Discussion on that motion. Timeframe, Mr. Manager. You know, we've had this pending for a year and a half or better. I believe this came to previous work sessions, but if you had to get information together that you don't have at your fingertips tonight, since you recommended that, what is your timeframe? Would you be prepared for the next work session?
Mayor, I hope I didn't recommend it to y'all. That was not my intent. My intent was, is that given the complexity of the issue, and given what I knew were going to be the questions, I didn't think you'd be able to answer them all tonight, but that wasn't my recommendation. But I think we'd be able to definitely have it for you at your September work session.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say that we have talked about this for probably a year and a half, almost two years, and have beaten our drum to the chief, saying, we want to get this done, we want to get this done. And now, here we are. All the work has been done, and now we're saying, well, maybe we don't. Respectfully, I appreciate the work you've done. Our citizens are worried about sitting out on their porches. And if this can put anything in the toolbox, I think that we need to move ahead on it, because we have been talking about this for quite some time now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Ingram, second round.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is discussion phase on the motion. Okay. So, I think there's a, I think a misinterpretation of what's being asked tonight. I think what's being asked is, well, from my perspective, I did ask to reconsider and get more information. But what I think, what the real ask is, to move it to a work session, so we can have a finer conversation on it. Because, and this is one of the reasons why, we have this in front of us this evening, and we have our quarterly police report in front of us as well this evening. I don't think it's in our best interest to counterfeit anything that we are doing to move this community forward. A part of this also talks about how soldiers on Fort Bragg are selling their guns. And so, in my perspective, I think we just need to have a better conversation about how we move these, this, this forward. But once again, we are seeing municipalities pull it back because of the data is not doing what it thought, they thought it would do. So, I'm asking that we just have a conversation. It's already been motion and second. For that matter, I would like to just call for the vote. Thank you.
All right. So, prior to taking, taking the vote on that, council, this is to pull it, so the motion, Councilmember Benevente, seconded by Councilmember Ingram, to pull. Those in favor of said motion, show of hands.
Excuse me, are you saying pull it for a work session?
I'm saying the motion that's on the floor is to do that. Yes, ma'am. All right. Show of hands, those in favor. All right. That is Councilmember Benevente and Ingram. Those opposed, show of hands. All right. It's Councilmember Hondros, Banks-McLaughlin, Councilmember Brenda McNair. All right, it's Councilmember Hondros, Banks-McLaughlin, Councilmember Brenda McNair, Councilmember Jensen, Dawkins, Hare, and Thompson. So motion fails. And I apologize, Councilmember McNair, you know, new seats and, and new process, so I'll get it together. But thank you. All right, so with that, that motion fails, two to eight. Councilmember Hare.
Yes, Mayor, I move, make a motion that we authorize the execution of a one-year contract for the service as recommended by staff.
All right, it's Councilmember, motion by Councilmember Hare to execute, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, and discussion on the motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benevente.
I think it's important that folks here take the opportunity to recognize the potential harm in all this. Very specifically, this shot spotter technology cannot actually tell you what kind of gun has been fired. And in practice, it's sent officers on wild goose chases. In practice, these companies are manually adjusting what they claim was a decibel level into saying, claiming it was a shot fired. This has resulted in false arrests. This has resulted in people being wrongly accused. And ultimately, it's created a lot of havoc for people who then have to fight against this technology that's been spoken about to the Ohio Supreme Court, specifically on how this technology is ultimately humans behind it all, that this is not Shazam on your phone where you can pick up any song that you hear on the radio, that this technology is actually recording people's conversations. That's something that the government cannot do without warrants. So I think a lot of this, council, is moving much too quickly and is going to be making us very vulnerable to liability by moving this item forward. I think we can all educate ourselves a lot more on the concerns with this technology by moving it to a work session. So I'd ask that folks to reconsider.
Thank you, sir. And, Council, I'll just say that, just for the public, there are three vendors that applied to the RFP. One of the issues that have been mentioned in a particular case is from one vendor, which we are not necessarily speaking of that particular vendor. So there was a detailed information in the packet about the different pros and cons of it. This, I will say this, this is used by hundreds of communities, speak a lot of mayors in a lot of different places. Anything can be abused. Alexa has a microphone on it, but you know, I still listen to what I like to listen to on it. And so I don't think this has given a green light to abuse and take the privacy away from anyone. But, you know, we are all under pressure to make sure that our community is safe and we, and technology is a pathway to do it. So, council, with that, motion's been moved and seconded. And so with that, I'll call for your vote. Those in favor of the motion to approve the execution of the contract, show of hands. All right, that is Councilmember Hondros, Banks-McLaughlin, McNair, Jensen, Colvin, Dawkins, Hare, and Thompson. Those opposed, Councilmember Benevente and Ingram. All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, item 8.01, Fayetteville Fire Department, Second Quarter Report. Is that Chief Hill? All right, one of the chiefs.
Mayor, this will be presented by Deputy Chief Kevin Douglas.
Good evening, sir.
And this team.
Gentlemen.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, city staff. We're here tonight to give you the 2022 second quarter review. To my right is Deputy Chief Miguel Alvarez and to my left is Deputy Chief Ronnie Willett. We're here on behalf of Chief Hill, who's away at a professional development opportunity. We're going to do things a little different tonight. We're going to give you the first six months instead of just the quarter, just a little better data. So our department right now currently has three true vacancies. Since January 1, we've had 37 separations. Roughly a third of those are retired. A third have moved on to other fire departments and a third have just left the fire service. We're graduating 18 new firefighters in November and we are on track to start a academy of 20 to 24 in October. One thing about that is that's, this is the first time in our history since 1791, we've run two academies at the same time. And we've had 18 promotions in the first six months. For our diversity, if you look at the orange line, this is our diversity recruitment. And this, don't let this mislead you or alarm you. The numbers you see for the year are the year previously's recruitment efforts. So 2020 and 2021 are high because we were recruiting hard and heavy, then COVID hit. And now you see what it yielded in 2022, 31%. So we look for that to rebound quickly now that we're back out and about. The good thing about that is our number of hired working minority firefighters continues to trend upward. Even though it's not as, as sharp as we'd like it, it is trending upward. And we're reminded that this is a marathon, not a sprint. And also a thing to note is, in 2022, we had a third less total applications than we've ever had. So, and that's, that's not us, that's the fire service in total. Our total incidents are running right in line with 2022 and obviously, or 2021, excuse me. And of course, they've rebounded since the height of COVID in 2020. Our call types, EMS continues to be our, our primary response at 62%. Fire response, that's house fires, car fires, woods fires, things like that, are 15%. Hazardous conditions are 6%, that's your gas leaks, your fuel leaks. And false alarms, false calls are at 8%. Our response times continue to hang in there. They're holding strong. Our alarm handling times are holding good and that's a compliment to Ms. Reed's work with her short staff 911 center. She's working hard to keep us where we need to be. Our fire stats, don't let this one alarm you. The structure fires have gone up 90 calls since 2021. And that's because we, in the early part of 2022, we implemented a new record management system and reporting system. And that allowed us to drill down deeper into the data where we were having fire alarm responses for cooking fires. They're now considered a structure fire. And what this does is it allows us to drill down deeper into the data, identify high-risk areas and get our community risk reduction folks out there, working with those folks. So you'll see that, like I said, the total structure fires is up 90, but that's more just due to the data change. And you see that reflects that with the fire starting in the kitchen is now 67.9%, where it was 24%. That's a direct reflection of that. In the first six months, we had one fire fatality, 10 civilian fire injuries and one firefighter injury, which was a back strain, and that firefighter's back to work. Our percentage of fires confined to the room of origin is much higher. Again, it was due to cooking fires and things like that on the data. And our fire loss continues to be in line with where it's been. Our top three fires were the Green Street Fire, which was estimated at 350,000 in damage and was a HVAC and electrical fire. We had a hut fire at E. Miller School, which was also an electrical malfunction. And we had a house that was heavily damaged out in the Clifdale, West Fayetteville area. And that was an undetermined fire. Our EMS responses are, they're a little bit higher than they were last year. I think that's just more, you know, COVID's making a little bit of a resurgence. People are out and about. If you look at our opioid overdoses with Narcan administered, it's down. And we really can't explain why, other than we hope that the, the community task force, the police having Narcan and a lot of other citizens having Narcan are allowing that administration to happen faster prior to our arrival. So when we get there, it's already on board with them and we can go ahead and move towards further lifesaving measures. Our cardiac arrest responses are down and our saves are up. Our hazmat responses are slightly higher. The majority of that's due to our natural gas leaks from the contractors born, moving in the fiber and things like that. Carbon monoxide emergencies are up a little bit and our hydrocarbon spills are staying consistent. Fire prevention and fire inspections, nothing exciting to report. Our fire code violations have increased and we're working on some strategies for that. And our intentionally set fires are 20 for the first half of the year. Our top five violations are electrical hazards, fire extinguisher testing and maintenance not being up to date, exit signs, fire alarms and sprinkler systems, and exit pathways. Some of our mid-year highlights, this summer, we graduated 40 students from our Cape Fear cert team camp, which was a great success. Nothing but positives from that. 808 smoke detectors and 52 carbon monoxide detectors have been installed in single-family dwellings in the city. Nearly 7,000 fire hydrants were painted and serviced. All of our fire pumps, ladders, fire hose were tested in accordance with OSHA. Our firefighter physicals and fitness assessments were completed. And we've reached roughly 20,000 residents during our fire prevention activities. Fire Station 4 is close. We expect a groundbreaking in the next few weeks and hope to start construction October and November timeframe. Here's what we're really excited about. Chief Hill promised you a hands-only CPR program and we're announcing tonight that we're starting it September 1st. As you know, sudden cardiac arrests are a leading cause of death in North Carolina. Ourselves, Cape Fair Valley Health and Duke Clinical Research Institute have formed a partnership. Duke did a pilot program which indicated 59% increase in survivability due to rapid bystander CPR. Our goal is to reach at least 10% of the population within the next five years. And you can contact 910-433-1413 to start scheduling. We're going to be out and about. We're going to hit civic groups, community watch groups, church groups. We're going to try to catch you at the, at the food line. We're going to be in city departments hitting everybody. We hope to see all of you here, maybe at a work session. It's really nothing more than 10 to 20 minutes and you could save somebody's life. And actually, Fayetteville actually is above the national average. We are at 12 to 13% cardiac arrest save rates. That may be because, you know, we're Fort Bragg and they get the training and we've got a lot of medical personnel. But imagine what we can do when we get everybody else trained. And the national average is 8%,. So with that, I know we've got a lot going on, so we'll yield it to you guys for questions.
Thank you, Chief. Do have a couple. Can you go back to the slide that showed the breakdown of your call types? I think that, that pie chart right there. So I've, I've always wondered this. I asked, asked the city manager about it. So if 62%, so almost two-thirds, come reference to EMS, somebody's in distress, a medical emergency. You use the fire truck to respond to everything in this pie chart?
Yes, sir. One type or another of fire truck. We, we have our squads, which are F-250, F-350 with the workbed vehicles. But not all fire department, or not all stations have those. So oftentimes, the, the fire engine goes and then if the squad's on a call, then the fire engine goes. But the, the reason behind that is because there's, there's a lot more of us than there are paramedics. So we can get there quick and provide the service at a much faster rate.
Well, I, yeah, I'm not disputing that part of it, the personnel part. I'm talking about the vehicle you use to get there. So if there's a car accident on the street, and the reason I brought this up, there was one the other day and it were two big fire trucks, but there was no fire. So they were, I guess, assessing what you do. So is it, how, how much extra manpower maintenance is to take the big fire truck versus to have those kits and those little SUVs like we see the EMS with? You know, with the sirens on it to kind of have some of the, the stuff there just to hold it? Particularly since you say that you're there just to hold it until the EMS guys get there, right?
Well, to your point, on vehicle accidents, we respond to big truck primarily and ask for firefighter safety.
Okay.
We use the big truck to block the traffic, so we have a buffer between traffic and our firefighters. And on what we call high-speed corridors, which is a speed of 55 or higher, we use two trucks. And we block, we have a protocol where one truck stays back and blocks and starts that lane closure. And then the other truck blocks our staff because, you know, they're primary. To add, the, the other part of your question is the staffing. We would love to run those small trucks, but we don't have the staff, you know, our head count is not big enough to put one at every station. So, you know, we can't, we can't just put a truck at the station and if we have a medical call, run to the, the call. Because oftentimes, when the guys are clearing the call, they catch a fire. Or if they're out and about, there's a fire, they don't want to have to go back to the fire station, get the fire truck and then go to the call.
Okay, gotcha. All right, Councilmember Hare and then Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Assistant Chief. Very, very happy to hear about the hands-only CPR. We've been talking about it quite a few months now in our crime prevention meeting. So we're happy to hear that that's on the go and I can't wait to do some posting and send emails out. Can you tell me, as I look at the slide, can you give me the date again? Because I didn't see that on the slide I'm looking at.
We go live September 1st. And the reason for that is we're finalizing some training for our staff and we're working on the publications and the flyers and things like that, which you'll see.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the, the same. And also, the location, is that, are those details that you're still working out for September 1st?
Will come to you.
Sir, oh, they'll come to, okay.
We're going to have them at all fire stations. We're looking at maybe like one fire station every Saturday. So this Saturday, it'll be at Station 14, next Saturday, Station 15, and move it around like that.
So, so question, so you know I'm highly involved in community watch groups. If my, some of my folk wanted to do it that particular night, is that okay in the evening?
We'll be there. Our, our fire staff, every, every one of our 355 are going to be trained to deliver this.
Okay, that's great. That's great. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Assistant Chief. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Thompson.
Yes, Assistant Chief. As I attend some of these community watch meetings and during your slide presentation, you stated that kitchen fires are the highest fires. I believe it's 69% that you put on your slide and.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. And you always have fire department staff at these community watch meetings. But I have never heard them talk about the new fire suppressant system that you can have over your top range that will kill out one of those fires really, really fast. Can you put that on their things-to-do list as they attend these community watch? So that residents can know exactly that they have options when it comes to fires that can dish out a fire real fast?
Yes, sir. Are you talking about the hood, the little canisters?
That's correct. And my second question is, you talked about hazmat and most of them are done, most of your calls probably from fiber optics hitting gas lines and so forth and so on. But with the 295 expressway and a lot of speeding and crashes that I have seen on 295, if there is a battery fire or a gas fire, is your staff and some of the other fire departments equipped to handle that type of hazmat?
Yes, sir. The best thing to do right now is to, to be honest with you, is to shut the road down and let it burn out. It takes, they're, they're, you know, this is early, early data. They're saying it takes between 9 and 13,000 gallons of water to put out a Tesla. So if the manager's car catches on fire. Where, if he's in the neighborhood where we can grab a fire hydrant, then we can, we can do something with it. But if it's on the interstate, we have, we have tanker task force that we can call in from the county. But it's, it's the thermal runaway of the battery. But it's the thermal runaway of the battery. So yes, to answer your question, yes. But you may not like the optics of it.
Mr. Mayor?
All right.
To Battalion Commander, duh. Just let it burn.
All right, all right, Councilmember Honduras.
I move to accept the report.
All right, so motion by Councilmember Honduras to accept, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins. Any discussion? Those in favor of accepting the report? Show of hands. All right, Chief, thank y'all, good job. What's remarkable to me is, you know, several years ago when we started, that diversity number was at less than 5%. And you guys up in the twenties and striving, so thank you.
We're working on it.
Yeah, I see. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, item 8.02, Chief Hawkins.
So, thank you, Council. So before we get started with our quarterly report, as you know, we've been working on strategies for violent crime and community-based public safety is what I believe is what communities across the nation should be moving towards, which incorporates all communities. So as a result of that, we had a summit over a year ago and then we had a landscape analysis. You know that you've all supported violent interrupters and that program. So we have Prue already working with us. But with this landscape analysis, we have Mr. Keala Sherrills here to share just a snippet. You already have the report. We know that you haven't had probably time to read it. But he's going to probably come up here and answer a few questions for you for just maybe about five minutes.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Council. I know that you all didn't have an opportunity to review in detail the landscape analysis. But it was definitely a labor of love for us, for the collective teams. So just on behalf of the team, we want to thank you all for investing in us to support the build-out of your community-based public safety initiative as a complementary strategy to policing in the city. There was just a few findings, things that I would share just real quick. But for some of you that don't know, my name is Keala Sherrills. I'm the Executive Director of the Community-Based Public Safety Collective. We're a national TTA Training and Technical Assistance Provider for community violence intervention organizations. We also anchor and run the White House Community Violence Intervention Collaborative, which is the Biden's administration's investment in a complementary strategy for policing in the country. As you know, some of you all might know, the President recently, we just passed the Safer Communities Act, which was a, I mean, a lot of funding for multiple pieces around mental health. But also it set aside about $250 million specifically for community violence intervention over the next five years. And those dollars will be coming out, actually probably within the next month. In addition to a $5 billion proposed investment for this Safer Americas bill, that's a part of his 23 annual budget as well. And all of these dollars will be available for, for communities like Fayetteville, who are looking at complementary strategies around public safety. And so I'll just share just a couple of quick things and open up for some questions and comments and concerns. But one of the targeted approaches to violence interruption, the evidence confirmed that basically less than 1% of the populations is actually producing 80 to 90% of the harm. And one of the things that we understand is that that 1% of the population has serious mental, emotional, psychological health issues that go unaddressed. You know, some of the things that we also understand is that those who are at highest risk for violence, you know, are also at highest risk for victimization as well. And in order for us to really address, you know, violence at its root, we have to invest in community-based solutions. Partnering with residents as constituents, as real partners in safety and community, and investing in training those individuals as public safety professionals in conflict resolution, mediation, de-escalation strategies. As the chief said, the PD has already invested in Kevin and his team with the Prue Project. We think that you guys are on to something just in terms of, you know, developing out, you know, the strategy. We also have a list of recommendations that came out of the landscape analysis just in terms of investing in more robust victim services and support services. Also investing in building out the infrastructure of Prue. In terms of fiscal infrastructure, programmatic infrastructure, so that you have a long-term partner on the ground in safety. And that, and that community is not just seen as a subject in the conversation around safety, right? I know that traditionally we say public safety and people say police, right? But, you know, safety is a shared strategy. And I know we've invested hundreds of millions of billions of dollars, you know, over decades in policing strategies. And I think now it's time for us to make an equal investment in community-based solutions and tie these strategies together so that we can actually reduce violence and sustain it over the long term. And so with that, I'd love to answer any questions, comments and concerns that folks might have.
All right, Council, any questions? Councilmember Ingram?
Yes, thank you. Let me get, I did some highlighting. Part of the recommendations it mentioned, the juvenile age range was, I think it said 16 to 23?
Yes.
Okay. A part of it is talked about utilizing our Boys and Girls Club. Here locally, we don't have a teen program for our Boys and Girls Club. And so by way of that recommendation, would you say that you would recommend us funding for that to be so? Okay.
Yes.
And then, me. There was a comment that was mentioned, I'm so sorry. I thought we were going to go backwards with this, so let me. All right, so it says, "Despite Chief Hawkins' intense focus on improving community police relations, it was reported that trust in the police department among young black men is historically low, recently exacerbated by the Jason Walker shooting by an off-duty Cumberland County deputy." Did you, did you write that part?
Yes, our team.
Okay. So coming, stemming from that, because it highlights young black men, what the recommendations that I reviewed here, I have a big scratch in the middle of my head trying to figure out what that, what that truly means and looks like for this community. And I'll be honest, I didn't think you were going to make the recommendations to us as to what we, I thought it was going to come from a community-led type of situation where the people that we have partnered with such as the Prue Project, Mr. Brooks, Mr. Sweets and Ms. Murphy, I thought they were going to, because they know the community. So did they have some input within this?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
So we did a two-day site visit. We interviewed over 21 community advocates and organizations. So this was informed, like our strategy is not to come to communities and to develop programs. We actually come to enhance and strengthen existing infrastructure and organizations and programs. And so this all came from those residents and community-based organizations that we talked to about how to approach the work here in the city.
Okay. And so basically what I got out of this was, at the end of the day, if we want crime to be reduced, we need to put money into the hands of the organizations, so i.e. the ones that were listed in this recommendation, to help them actually do the work. Is that essentially what this report basically?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That the city needs to make a multi-year investment in fiscal and programmatic infrastructure for your community-based public safety initiative. And that most of these organizations are primarily led by, by black, young black men.
Right.
And as we know, that the number one cause, you know, for death of young black men 14 to 26 is gun violence. And so training those individuals as public safety professionals, it's really about self-determination. You know, for these young men who live in a community, because we have to own safety, you know, in our own neighborhood for ourselves and also for the communities in which we live in. And not, you know, I mean, of course, we pay in law enforcement, you know, as a, as a, as a partner. But we still have to call them to respond, right? And so it's important that if residents, you know, one of the things that we discovered in some of the national work that we've done, like in Newark, 62% of the homicides started as domestic or interpersonal conflicts, right? Before they escalated into homicide. So the belief is that if we stand in the gap, if we train residents on the block, you know, in conflict resolution, mediation and de-escalation strategies through a trauma-informed lens, if we have a team of individuals who can actually respond and support that overall process, because mediation is not a one-time activity, you know? It's an ongoing, you know, strategy sometimes because you got to talk to the associates of the folks who are sometimes involved in the conflict, right? And so it's a little longer-term strategy, you know, that, that, I think that having that type of comprehensive approach that's led by those who are, in many cases, the victims and perpetrators of violence, we get a lot more traction.
Okay, and then I'm wrapping up and there's two more things that I noticed. In the, in the report, and I remember when this was brought to us and if it's separate, Chief, just say it's separate, we were told that there was something that was going to focus on certain ZIP codes. And here it specifically mentions 28306, but not any of the ZIP codes that was stated that we would focus. Is there a reason why?
Just the data.
Okay, so then, I live in 28306, so I know exactly what's going on there. But also I noticed that amongst all of the organizations that was listed, life-changing mentoring was not mentioned. And you mentioned that a lot of these organizations were ran by black men and they do an amazing job with the, with the young men in that. I also don't think I saw greater life in Fayetteville, but I would ask that this could probably be amended to include them because they are truly doing the necessarily work. And I don't, if this is what you're recommending, that we, we put money to support them, then we need to make sure that we are getting the necessary people that are doing the necessary work to them, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a couple on the recommendations, but how I interpret it was, they had two days. Two days you can't, of course, include everybody that's in our community. I believe there was also a roundtable that's discussed where you start inviting more people that are actually in the community. And then if there is, it results that there is someone better or already has a program, that's how the support comes. So that's how I interpreted it. The initial ones who came out, who we know, and now if there's anyone else, then they're able to come to the table and have a total entire community roundtable. And we're already starting the training with Prue and those representatives to know how to start to build it up.
Yeah, and I wholly, heartily hear what you're saying, Chief. But I would, I would err to say, we know who does what in this community. And so to not, not have them at these initial conversations, to me, that's, and we know they're doing the work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ingram. Councilmember Benevente?
Mr. Sherrills, you mentioned that in your work, you all did some studies and about 60% of the conflicts that are happening are interpersonal ones. Did you, were you able to find a percentage for us locally in your landscape analysis?
No, sir.
Is that something you plan to do?
If that's something that you would like us to do.
Chief Hawkins, what's the budget for the police department every year?
It's all, it's over 59 million.
Mr. Sherrills, during your comments towards the end, I guess I just want to highlight this for our citizens and for City Council, you asked for multi-year investment equal to what the police are currently getting in the form of community-based solutions. Could you tell me why that's so important?
Yes, this work has to be financed. We can't ask people to risk their lives, to leverage their relationship capital in communities for free. We've done that for far too long. This work is extremely dangerous, it's very hard, and, you know, people lose their lives. And so as a practitioner, you know, because I grew up doing this work, I organized a peace treaty in my neighborhood that changed the quality of life in our community. I tell you that, that the folks who do this work rarely ever get the credit for what they do. And so I think it's important that we incentivize peace in neighborhoods. Yeah, it's just no way of getting around it. I mean, if, you know, if you want somebody to intervene and mediate a conflict to a peaceful resolve, compensate them, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Sherrills. I attended several of Mr. Sherrills' community conversations around the city. And we talked about, you know, Ms. Johnson down the street who knows everybody in the neighborhood, who is able to sort of, you know, have conversations and help mediate. Wouldn't it be incredible if, you know, that person could do that for a living? Wouldn't it be incredible? And to the point that if you look at the annual salary of an individual police officer, split that amongst several members of the community, and it was said during those meetings that that would have a greater impact on public safety in a neighborhood than what we're currently doing. So I think that's really important to consider for the City Council as we think of new strategies to enforce public safety that will actually improve the situation in our neighborhoods. Thank you, Mr. Sherrills.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Sherrills.
Thank you, Mr. Sherrills. So, getting started, what you're going to see a little different today is I'm going to step back and let my command staff, Major Joyce, Assistant Chief Braden and Assistant Chief Nollet come and present the quarterly. But I'll come back for questions and they'll be here as well. All right, let me start the transition.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This evening, we will, during our second quarter annual review, we will talk about crime statistics, crime trend analysis, our crime-fighting strategies and community engagement. One of the first things that we will share, and this was something that we know was shared during the first quarter, but for the benefit of the new council members who are on the council who were just elected, we want to talk about our six-year total crime trend. And if you look from 2016 to 2021, that was over 4,600 incidents decreasing each and every year, are a relative percentage decrease of 27. almost 3%. And you look at that, and during that same amount of time, we've had population increases across our city. We've had business populations that have increased. When you look at Freedom Town Center and the number of businesses that have been built there and continue to be built there, we look at new hotels that are being built in our city as well and annexed areas in some of those satellite areas. You can also liken it to a professional sports team. When a professional sports team wins a championship, the odds are always against them to go back and repeat as a champion. That's something that we have been able to do during that six years. And as you continue to look at that, even a championship team has to make an adjustment. And they look, Mike, we can look at that through technology, new initiatives, strategies such as the landscape analysis and working with the violent crime interrupters. We'll move forward into our crimes against persons trend over that same six-year period. And you'll see that that was 730 incidents less over that time period, or a relative percentage decrease of 16.5%. We can look at 2019 and see that we were just under 3,900 incidents for that year and we've been able to relatively maintain that through the next two years. As we look at our property crime trend, that has also been able to decrease over that same six-year period of time. Almost 4,000 less incidents over that period and a relative decrease of over 31%. As we move into the next presentations that will be made by Assistant Chief Braden and then he'll present it to, or give it to Assistant Chief Nollet, the numbers are always evolving. As we pull these data sets from a number of places, as detectives continue to investigate these type of crimes. But at the same time, when we look at this data, a number of eyes on that, we do make mistakes during that and we'll make sure that we correct those with you this evening. So at this time, I will turn it over to Assistant Chief Braden.
Good evening. So as Major Nollet, Major Joyce indicated, we were talking about the combination of total crime and the decrease over the past six years. Out of that total crime, he mentioned persons crimes and property crimes. Persons crimes, just as a quick explanation, include crimes such as homicide, aggravated assaults, communication of threats. assaults, communication of threats. Our property crimes include such crimes as motor vehicle theft, motor vehicle breaking and enterings, and larcenies. So, as you look, it shows that there is an increase in both categories for persons crimes and property crimes at the end of the second quarter for this year. Additionally, you'll see that citywide arrests for felony and misdemeanor events are actually up. The correlation between the two is as the crimes go up, we naturally expect that there's more arrests as we investigate and solve those crimes. So, that's a total combination of the two, persons and property, we're gonna break those out into individual crimes. Persons first, as we know, homicide and rape are probably the most egregious of persons crimes. We're showing a slight decrease in, in the homicide category, but we see a significant decrease in the category of rape. The rest of the categories, aggravated assault, which includes both felony and misdemeanor assaults, is up by fourteen percent, and all other person crimes are up by about five-point-eight percent. All other crimes include all the misdemeanor assaults, communication of threats, any of the categories outside of the serious felony and aggravated assault offenses. All death investigations, it's very important as we speak about homicide to talk about all the other things our homicide unit actually does. So, homicides, again, are down by four percent currently, but additionally, our unit actually goes out to most overdoses to review those incidents, to make sure there's any prosecutable offenses occurring with those overdose deaths. Suicides, to ensure that there's nothing suspicious in nature about the series of events, and natural and accidental causes of death. Remember, all manners of death are investigated to ensure that there's no criminal activity or negligence as a proximal cause for the actual death. When looking at homicide analysis, you know, our homicide unit and our command staff, we try to take everything into consideration. We look at the victimology of the victim, we try to take into consideration the offender data, whether the repeat offenders, and possible motives. I think this goes along with what Mr. Sherrills was talking about earlier. If you look at the top two incidents, we have an unknown but domestic violence and an ongoing argument are listed as the highest, the two possible motives of greatest occurrence. Just to address some issues, I know there was some talk about the number of motives. Remember, there's multiple incidents out there, some where we have multiple victims, some where we have multiple suspects. So, as we deal with possible motives, you know, we could have potentially one motive with more than one actual victim out there, so not always will it equate to the actual twenty-four that you saw listed earlier. So, we talk about ag assaults, this is anything less than murder, okay? For our felonies, that could be a serious shooting incident, or it could be a serious physical assault that leads to serious injury that has to be treated at the hospital. In addition to that, we have misdemeanor assaults. That could be a simple push, a shove, or, you know, just some unwanted touching. So, so the ag assaults, they fall into those categories of the misdemeanors and the felonies, so it's important to know the difference there. Additionally, we break out the domestic violence assaults. These are, again, going back to what Mr. Sherrills was talking about, you know, that conflict there leads often and escalates to the point of a homicide, and we wanna make sure that we're tracking those numbers as well. For our misdemeanor domestic violence, we have a total of one-hundred-and-twenty-one incidents to date at the end of the second quarter for a total of a twelve-point, little over twelve percent increase, and our felonies are up twenty-eight percent. So, we need to pay attention to the actual, the domestic violence assaults as they continue to arise. Breaking out into our crimes against property, as you see burglary at the top of the list, that's gonna encompass anything from a burglary of a residence to motor vehicle breaking and entering. Larceny can be as simple as someone stole your cellphone, your wallet, or they actually stole an item of great value such as a television or some jewelry. Motor vehicle thefts, you see they're up thirty-six percent for the year. What we've encountered mostly throughout the year is groups of juveniles. We've identified several groups that are involved in multiple motor vehicle thefts throughout the year, and, and just one group can account for multiple motor vehicle thefts, you know, in, in the range of, I think, the most recent one, not in this quarter, not in this quarterly report, but they attributed at least fifteen motor vehicle thefts to one group of juveniles. Robberies and all other property crimes, all of the property crimes is pretty significant because as you look, larceny, those misdemeanor larcenies account for up to about two-hundred-and-ninety incidents up to the second quarter. Fraud incidents, one-hundred-and-sixty-seven up until the second quarter. Vandalism, over two-hundred-and-eleven incidents during, up to the second quarter. So, again, there's a lot of misdemeanor crime or smaller associated crimes with property that, that add to those numbers. We talked about the violent crime initiative in 2021, LP, license plate readers was initiative that was included in that. Uh, excuse me, oh, yeah. License, license plate reader technology is initiated in October of last year, once we started putting cameras up. Throughout the beginning of the first quarter, we had, Phase One was completed and Phase Two started during the second quarter of the year. But throughout, out the year, we noticed that license plate readers have been attributed to some of the arrests that we made in some major cases. If you look to date, they've been responsible for, assisted with detectives recovering at least fifty-nine stolen motor vehicles. They've seized thirteen vehicles in accordance with activity observed. They've helped locate at least seven missing persons, and they're attributed to two-hundred-and-sixty-nine felony arrests and one-hundred-and-twenty-six misdemeanor arrests. It should be noted that, that LPRs aren't used to enforce traffic violations, but we take and we target them for incidents where we have an aggravated assault. If we see a vehicle that's leaving the area, we're able to enter that vehicle into our system and actually track movement and not locate it within the city. Stolen motor vehicles are entered, that's how we've recovered at least fifty-nine over the years. Additionally, once those vehicles are stopped, we have ancillary seizures. If you look, there's a lot of drugs that have been seized, and, and in addition to that, including cocaine, marijuana, methamphetamine, fentanyl, currency to the amount of eighteen-thousand dollars, and seventeen weapons. So, again, the license plate reader technology has greatly enhanced our investigative processes. Impact of federal-state task force officers, this is only for the second quarter only. We get this every quarter, but we, we treat this quarter-by-quarter basis. TFOs are utilized to seek enhanced federal prosecution for our most prolific and violent offenders in the community. We partner with our, our federal agencies and the U.S. Attorney's Office for that prosecution. So, in the second quarter, TFO activity, we've had five individually, five individuals federally sentenced, sixteen individuals federally indicted, and over four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in seized currency, along with sixteen firearms. As you look at the narc, narcotic investigative investigations, you notice that cocaine, methamphetamine, and fentanyl are the only three listed. Heroin, you've seen heroin previously listed on, on quarterly reports. What we found is fentanyl has overtaken heroin and has found present in almost all heroin seizures. With that being said, we listed these three because they're all scheduled uncontrolled substances, meaning they're the most addictive and dangerous for consumption. If you look, we've had over thirty-one thousand grams of cocaine, that equates to about sixty pounds, and that seizure rate is up eighty-four percent. If you look at the methamphetamine, that thirteen thousand grams equates to about twenty-six pounds of methamphetamine, and that seizure is up seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-one percent. Fentanyl, three-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty grams, that, that equates to about six pounds, and it shows an increase of about fifty-four percent in our seizures. Addition to the, the drugs that have been seized, you take a look at the weapons, we seized twenty-five up till the second quarter, but significantly, the arrests comparable to last year, they're up from eight to thirty-four at the end of the second quarter. There were some discrepancies with the earlier release, we updated our numbers for weapons seized department-wide. We'd like to show the comparison of what the entire police department is doing as compared to the narcotics unit individually. So, we have a total of four-hundred-and-eighty-one weapons that were seized up to the second quarter this year from our narcotics unit. So, this slide, during the first quarter presentation, it looked a little bit different. The first quarter presentation actually had residential B and Es, business B and Es, and motor vehicle breaking and enterings, all listed in conjunction with one another. What we found was is that motor vehicle be, breaking and enterings attributed to the greatest amount of vehicles stolen within the cities. So, we took actual focus on that for the second quarter. So, for the second quarter, we took a look at the numbers and comparison, the weapons stolen during the motor vehicle break-in. And as you can see, the numbers indicate that for every four-point-five motor vehicle break-ins, there's at least one weapon stolen. So, you have a one-in-four chance of getting a gun out when you break into a car. And if you look at that, more than fifty percent of the motor vehicles out there that had breaking and enterings were left unsecured. So, you know, I think this attributes to both the violent crime in our community, the potential to have someone gain possession of a weapon, threaten another one, communicate a threat, shoot at someone, along with, you know, our property crime, just the sheer number of motor vehicle B and Es that are occurring. So, I hope that's what you get from this, what you can illustrate during this slide. In addition to that, traditionally, you've seen clearance rates indicated in, in the quarterly reports. What we found is, is that at this point in time, we are now just finishing out, closing out some of the major incidents from 2021, some of the actually, the homicide cases, the serious assaults, those are felony investigations that take quite a while, so to date, a lot of those cases are being wrapped up, and we should be able to truly get you a better indication of what the 2021 clearance rates were by the third or fourth quarter. All right?
Chief, we don't have, we don't have FBI's clearance on that.
Yes, yes, so the FBI, they usually follow that third quarter before they release their actual clearance rates for that, that previous year as well. All right, and I'll turn it over to Chief Nolett.
Thank you, sir. So, good evening, Council and Mr. Mayor. So, you heard Chief Braden and Major Joyce talk about the statistics that are involved within the organization, and we look at the statistics, and it drives everything that we do. But we do that both internally as it relates to uses of forces and those sorts of things, and we'll discuss that, but we're also gonna discuss traffic stops and, and some of the things that we're doing as, as we see the need. Sadly, so far this year, we're up in traffic fatalities from sixteen at this point to, from ten last year. The greatest increase is in motorcycles, we see seven for the year, and the greatest contributing factor to many of these accidents is speed. Because of that, you'll notice that on our traffic stop data, that we're actually increased it by over two, over twenty-eight-hundred, which is an increase of approximately twenty-one percent as it relates to warning and state citations being issued. The primary focus of these citations is moving violations as it focuses on the safety of the, of the citizens of the city of Fayetteville on the actual roadways within the city of Fayetteville, so we're focusing on that. But you also realize, and we're appreciative, that the greatest risk for fatalities or the highest concentration of fatalities has happened on Pamley Drive. We've had three of the sixteen occur there this year, but if you remember, we've lowered the speed limit on that area, or the council has lowered the speed limit on that area as well as Clifdale Road and Stony Point. And just to give you an idea of what we're doing in, in a reaction to that lowering, is we've spent almost, our traffic unit, which consists of approximately eight officers, has spent over eighty hours in that area and has written almost two hundred, has completed almost two hundred traffic stops, both in the education phase as well as the enforcement phase of this process, because we know that we're not gonna go out there, just start writing tickets for everybody's moving, we have to educate the community as it relates to the lowering of the speed. We also heard the community's concern as it relates to large crowds of vehicles gathering at gas stations or other businesses, doing, doing circles in the roadway. And one of the other things we've done is throughout the summer months, we've had a weekend special involving our traffic unit, and because of this, we've seen a marked reduction in careless and reckless driving based on these large groups and large gatherings. These gatherings are actually bringing people from outside the county into our city, and so, as we address this and actually educated them and got to know them and spoke to them and, and identified who was in these groups, we also identified the fact that they would flee when we would try to attempt to stop them. As a result, we've seized sixteen vehicles with a dollar amount of approximately five-hundred-thousand dollars, which has been turned over to the Cumberland County School Board, or to the state for sale at auction, which will then go to the Cumberland County School Board. But that has, when we go back and speak to these groups, that has dramatically reduced their tendency to run from us, now they're just pulling over on the side of the road. But when we would try to enforce organized speed racing, the, both vehicles would take off in the past. So, we hear what, we hear what the community's saying, we're responding to that. As we continually evaluate everything that we do, we take it from the very beginning, which is the call to 911. Ms. Lisa Reed does an amazing job managing the staff that she has. We heard earlier from the fire department about CPR for every member. Their organization has one-hundred-and-ninety-four CPR assists just over the phone to 911 callers this year alone, which I think is amazing considering the staffing level that they have is dramatically low. But you'll see here that our calls for service in 2021 were at about ninety-eight thousand. They're currently through second quarter at one-hundred-and-seven thousand. That's an increase of approximately eight-point-three percent, which is about eight-point-six, eight-thousand-six-hundred calls. That's alarming considering last year, they were up sixteen percent. So, we're on pace to be in a two-year window up over thirty percent in calls for service for police and police only. So, as we look at this, we wanted to dig into the numbers, and we wanted to dig deeper, and you'll notice here differently, in the past, we had these numbers combined, and that didn't tell the true picture in my, in our eyes as a command staff, and we wanted to see. So, we wanted to evaluate from the time a citizen calls 911, to the time that the dispatcher dispatches an officer, to the time that the officer is dispatched and arrives on scene, what those three phases look like, and you'll see that come third quarter. That'll be the numbers, and that'll be the breakdown as we present it to you, because I think it gives a more realistic call, more realistic picture of what our 911 area is doing and the great work they're doing. But in this case, total priority call, priority one calls, we average five-minute response time. That is a homicide, a shooting, suspect just on scene, your house is getting broken, broken into, and somebody's entering your house, that's five minutes, us driving from the time somebody calls 911 to the time we're on scene, blue lights and siren going there right now to get there. We're at five minutes. Priority two is the same type of calls, but it's not in progress. In other words, your house was broken into, and you're just getting home to it. We're not gonna drive to those types of calls, blue lights and sirens for the safety of our community. As you heard earlier, we have more vehicles on the road, we have more businesses, we have more patrons, we have more citizens in the area, but those men, that response time is about fifteen and a half, almost sixteen minutes. Now, it says here, the national average is approximately ten minutes, and in the past, we would tell you that we, our response time goals were six to nine minutes, that's a combination of those. In 2017, a study was done, and that's the last study that done that gives a rough estimate as to what the national average is for calls for service response time. We recently located a study through Fort Worth that Ms. Lisa Reed is evaluating to see how we can bring that into our agencies and some of the practices they brought in to see if we can reduce that calls for service, but this is a constant evolving process for us. So, as we, as we go forward, we look at what we do internally as an organization, and you'll notice here our use of force data and internal affairs data. So, it's a little bit different, it's a little alarming to see use of force up, but we've actually, again, becoming a little more critical of who we are and wanting to do the best practices and the best businesses. In the past, we would not evaluate, we would not count in use of force data if an officer removed his firearm and pointed that at somebody. But for transparency and for obvious reasons, we have now consolidate, consolidate that into a use of force data. So, that twenty-eight that you see there actually includes the number of times how many officers have removed their firearm from their holster during their normal operation, because we wanna make sure that they're doing what is best practice for the organization, what's best practice within policing, but are well within departmental policies. All of these use of force investigations are started by a first-line supervisor, they evaluate them, they send it through the entire chain of command, so that goes from the sergeant all the way up to the chief of police for evaluation and independent recommendation as to the outcome and whether they think it's within policy. Departmental investigations are any investigations that you would see that we think, or we determine is a violation against departmental policy, or we even question whether it's a violation against departmental policy, and that can be anything from a uniform, to body-warn cameras, to driving, to whatever it might be. And you'll see here, we're down five, which is great news, which is a reduction of eighteen percent overall, and again, remember, this is just through the second quarter, so this is just through June. And citizen complaints, citizen complaints is anything that may be detrimental to the organization. In other words, we'll even take Facebook posts, Facebook Messenger, we'll take Instagram posts, we take anything that anybody says was poor, we take it, walk-ins, we take them all, and we evaluate them, we look at them. Every officer in the police department has a body-warn camera and an in-car camera, and we utilize those to make sure that our officers are given the best customer service they possibly can. Are we perfect? Absolutely not, but we're the first ones to call ourselves out on it. These twenty-two citizen complaints for this year so far is a reduction of forty-four percent, which is great. Now, we've been asking, we've been asked if there were the officer-involved shootings in this, and I'm proud to say that we didn't have any officer-involved shooting in, in 2021, so there's no reason to put that onto the slide. And as through the second quarter of this year, we didn't have any officer-involved shootings. If you remember sadly, the incident that I'm sure we're all well aware of occurred in July, that would be in the third quarter report as to where that is. that is, and those numbers will be reported at a future date. Through the assistance and the work that both management staff within the city, as well as the council has approved, we've made great strides in our recruiting, and we're going to talk about that. So you'll see here, again, remember, this is through June of 2022. This is not year-to-date. But we'll have some discussions as to where we are year-to-date. But overall, the department in June of 20, on June 30th, 2022, we were 70 employees down. That is 32 sworn employees, full-time and part-time employees, and then additional 38 full and part-time, non-sworn or civilian employees. So as it relates to police staffing, we currently have 40 individuals going through two separate academies that started one month apart from each other, both being held here at the Fayetteville Police Department at the Training Center. It's taxing on our staff and our officers, but we understand the, the need. Our training staff consists of four individuals. So it's a department-wide effort to get this accomplished. So we're pretty proud of the staff, but we're pretty proud of the fact that there's 40 of them in there. This also includes nine hires from Puerto Rico. Remember, we had a, we thought outside the box and, and went to Puerto Rico to recruit some personnel from down there. We brought in nine individuals who have some experience in law enforcement or non-experience. We actually even recruited one telecommunicator. So we have somebody working in communications as well. And I talked earlier about the 911 staffing. So we currently have 17 vacancies there, but that's also not including the 13 that are in training. Matter of fact, we had two start this week. So Lisa Reed, and again, I can't say it enough, has done an amazing job doing 24-hour coverage on the third floor of this building with 30 vacancies at times, in training and getting them not only for the police department, but for the fire department as well. Proudly, we had a promotion and graduation ceremony this quarter. And I want, I want you to take this, take this image. We promoted 25 individuals this quarter. That's a sergeant all the way up to assistant chief. That's, that's the, that's the image of changing the tires on a race car without that race car stopping, because we didn't stop doing what we were doing. We just, they just jumped in the mix and kept going. There was no pit crew there to fill up the car with gasoline. We just, as we were driving around the turns, those wheels came off and another one came on. Chief Braden jumped in right where Chief Kelly left off. So as we move forward, we also had an opportunity to graduate 21 men and women who are now police officers who are in their final two weeks of training. They should be released from training within two weeks, and they'll help out the patrol as we're looking at staffing and responding to calls for service. One of our greatest responsibilities is community outreach. And we know that many of you, we've seen at community watch meetings and community, so some, and community events, and some of these people in these images, you'll know. But one of our, one of our flagship programs is the Faith Forum. When people hear that, they think of faith being just a church-based, and really, it's a partnership with church-based organizations, because we know, we know that many faith leaders have followers, and they're, and they're just leaders by nature. We partner with churches because they have the largest facilities for us to be able to meet in on a regular basis, plus it gets us in the community. But the reality is, this is, this is just one of our, one of our values as an organization, faith, pride, and dedication. It's faith within the, within the community and faith within the job that we do, that we can go out there and meet, meet people where they are to hear what they want. They, the community is typically the ones who will assign what they want to speak about at the next faith forum. In this one in particular, on May 19th, we partnered with St. Joseph Episcopal Church on the lower half of Ramsey Street. And we, we had a discussion about de-escalation, as well as site surveys. But it's amazing that we're having this meeting tonight, because on Thursday at 6:00 PM, we'll be at St. Luke's AME on Hillsborough Street. And we currently have approximately 100 people signed up, both physically and by Zoom. So that way that we understand that people have a busy schedule and can't be in a facility for, for an hour or two each, each night. But they can go on Zoom and listen while they're doing other stuff with their families. And, and this Thursday will, this Thursday will be discussion, there'll be a mental health presentation, as well as an active shooter training and just discussion. Another great program, this happened in April 1st, down at Walker Spivey Elementary, we had a movie night. Over 200 family, 200 family members, children, parents, community members came out. Ms. Pykes does an amazing job coordinating nonprofits, Cumberland County Sheriff's Department, Cape Fear Valley, bringing people to the table to have a discussion with the community while showing a movie that night. It's free, and it's a great event. We're actually having one coming up this month. It'll be Sing Two. So please follow us on our social media. We'll be having the dates and the times and locations specifically for that. We'll have two more additionally in October. We traditionally do these in areas of the community that we know want partnerships with the Fayetteville Police Department, need partnerships with the Fayetteville Police Department, but the Fayetteville Police Department also needs partnership with them. We have a long history of supporting our Special Olympic athletes. And each year, we do a torch run. And each year, we partner with local businesses, whether it's Chick-fil-A or Dunkin' Donuts. This year was Dunkin' Donuts. And so far this year, we're proud to say we've, we've raised over $21,000 for our Special Olympic athletes, so they can train and attend events throughout the year. This places us eighth in the entire state as to, as far as funds earned, funds raised for the, for the community group. Last year, we were sixth. So we're on pace to be there, if not better. We actually have our largest fundraiser coming up in October, which will be the Dink Doll Invitational Golf Tournament. He was a longtime supporter and longtime organizer for Special Olympics, and he's a retired sergeant from the department. He's since passed away. That concludes my portion of it. Thank you.
Thank you. They're not going to go far, because as you all are coming questions, I'm gonna stand on up, y'all. So that, there's no way one person does what we do in a police department. We walk as a team, and I'm very confident of all the employees. So, questions, please.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, Chief, let me say that was a very impressive presentation. I enjoyed that immensely. I have four questions. One is, what are we doing about those four-wheel dirt bikes that are ramping through the neighborhoods, specifically in my district, down Strickland Bridge, or Dundee, or Graham Road, that we're having a hard time catching, because by the time we recognize it, they're long gone before the police can get there?
Okay. I have to hear one. You want to go with the other one?
Oh, the second is motor vehicle theft. Could you regurgitate the information that you gave us at the gun violence forum that we have about the type of vehicle and the new technology they're using, and the age of the kids that are stealing these vehicles? Three, as we first got acclimated to our new jobs at City Council, City Manager gave us a sheet of hotspots of crime in our areas, specifically by district.
Yes.
As a police officer, and I know we have to do our part, what can we do to minimize the crime in those hotspots? And my last question is kind of personal, and tell me if I'm out of order or not.
Okay.
But Lieutenant Dow was a great friend of mine. He helped reconna in our community. Are we doing anything as a police department to recognize him on his one year of passing?
As a police department, no, we did not. So, but as a, as friends and recognition, we're always open to internal recommendations and make sure that we acknowledge that is still our family member. And if you had the annual, you know, you'll recognize not only him, he was in our annual, but it will duly noted. I'm gonna let Chief Braden answer these questions. You got it.
All right. Reference to the dirt bikes. Our citywide camera system is heavily utilized in those situations. We try to pick up when they're actually coming out of neighborhoods and getting onto the main thoroughfares. When possible, we try to establish a pattern of behavior for those, document what type of vehicle, what, who the rider is, you know, and, and, and attempt to locate that within the neighborhood at a later time, where we can go and actually charge that individual for any violations. We've actually caught on camera and use that as evidence for those violations. Typically, we see, you know, we, we get reports as they're out there, out and about, especially on the main thoroughfare such as Skyboat Road. I would encourage everyone to continue to call 911 and report those things as you see them. Don't be surprised if we don't chase, we don't engage, but we, we do want to make sure that we're documenting everything so that we can actually build a case against the individuals or the groups that come out and do those rides. Yes, and we actually have charged individuals in the past and actually seized motorcycles as well. That goes in line with what Chief Nollet was talking about. Sort of the same concept of the, as the, that, that the cars, the vehicles they were watching, that we're doing donuts in the road. Again, we're not going to engage, but we'll track them down. Motor vehicle thefts, typically, I, I think everyone's heard about the TikTok trend, you know, of how to steal a car. Not going to go into great detail about that, but at risk are your Hyundai's and your Kia's. Okay? Those are typically targeted throughout the community. If everyone remembers, Major Ramirez actually did a PSA early last week, talking about the juvenile and the youth in our community involved in criminal activity. We have several groups that have been identified, and, and basically, they're juveniles. You know, anywhere, the youngest that I've seen has been about 12 years old in, in a car that was stolen, all the way up to the, the age of 18. Major Ramirez gave a little synopsis of an event that occurs, I think, last week, or the week before last now, where there was an eight-year-old actually breaking into a house. So, so again, we're looking at juveniles mostly, but there are, you know, other, other trends that go around. But right now, the, the main one we're seeing is TikTok. And they're not just joyriding around the neighborhood. We're catching these vehicles in other jurisdictions, in other states. So again, you know, any help that we can have about suspicious activity or anything like that in the neighborhoods.
What's the brand of the car again?
Usually, typically, it's the Kia's and the Hyundai's. Oh, so what can, the question was about the community. What can you guys do? So typically, what we're looking for is the cooperation to community. Anybody alerting us to anything that seems out of the ordinary, call 911. I've had, I've been out to several community watches and met with several community members already since, you know, taking over as the field operations commander. I've heard a lot of concerns about calling 911 for a non-emergency. What, what will tell you is this, you know, and, and sometimes we, we, you know, it may not go well for some of our calls for service, but what it does is it gets you in a queue, so we know that we don't forget about you. Okay? So naturally, we're going to take those priority one calls for service, any of those crimes in progress. But we'll get to you, you know, just let them know it's a non-emergency, just have the cop come by and speak to me when possible. Not just that, but take, you know, be as detailed as possible when you're actually giving out information. You know, this is going to prevent us from stopping and engaging with the wrong individuals. You know, just telling us that there's, there's three individuals that are acting suspicions on the street corner? No, we're going to need heights, weights. We're going to need descriptions of what the persons are wearing. If they leave, you know, what direction were they going? What were they driving? What were they, you know, were they walking? Were they on those dirt bikes? So be as detailed as possible, give updates when possible, the information that you know that you've asked officers to respond to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Councilmember here.
Thank you. Assistant Chief, as you were just talking, I was smiling, because I, we had to do a 911 at the house. And I'm wanting you guys to come, but
It's frustrating.
It was, because it was so much detailed information that you wanted. It was very, very, a little frustrating, but we made it through, and you all came. So thank you.
We'll do, we'll try. We talked about having a PSA to talk about that, to let the community understand. We know it's frustrating, but those details are crucial, and we're already sometimes dispatching, but we're just trying to get this much information for the safety and to make sure we've got as much information as possible. Go ahead, what's your question?
And thank you for saying that, because a lot of our community, when I'm at community watch meetings, you say, well, I'm trying to get them out there, but I just wanted so much. I just almost wanted to give up, Mr. Here. And of course, so I'm glad that hopefully some people were, have been listening tonight. One of our concerns over the last few years, and we do know that we are in a, a pot of pulling potential officers in from all across the country, like everybody is.
Yes.
So I know the difficulties of that. But I do see here that we are now actually 403? Am I looking at this?
That, June 30th, yes.
Yeah. And so our actual number, full sworn, if we were at full capacity, what number should that be?
431.
Okay, 431. Okay. So we're not, we're not, we're not far off.
No, sir.
We're not far off. Explain.
But we don't slow down either.
Yeah. I pray we don't. I'm, I'm, I'm right there with you. Explain this item about, you say you went to Puerto Rico to get officers, and I, and I'm aware of what, what's going on. But kind of tell the audience all what we're doing, because I hear about police shortages all over the nation. So explain that to us. I would like to hear.
So I think the, the first biggest thing is when we came to you and said, we're in dire straits, and we need, we need to start initiative for first retention. Remember, our, our keeping who we have was our number one priority. So the incentives that were approved for funding to have retention bonuses, we also evaluated policies that officers really want, things like they want to be able to show their tattoos, or they might want to have a slight beard. Those things are big. And so we evaluated that, so we changed that policy. And then the incentives that you all approved for recruiting, whether it be a new, brand-new officer, whether it be a military experienced officer, or a lateral officer, which means someone who has experience, who's already been through Bletch, saves us time and money. You approve signing-on bonus as well as moving bonus.
Right.
So we still facing a challenge. So what we did was try to still think outside the box, and we looked at who was already inside our organization. And we had, in the past couple of years, brought someone, hired them from Puerto Rico that we knew it was, he was not totally, he was bilingual, but he struggled, but he got through. So as a result, we thought, Puerto Rico is US citizens. How can we recruit? And then how can we condense it? So we did a trip, and on the trip, we fast-tracked, we took bilingual employees, including myself, in order to not only take the applications onsite, had a line, we advertised ahead of time, then we did the testing onsite, and then we did a secondary interview onsite. So there were 60 people who showed up, fit out an application. Out of the 60, 25 actually passed the test. Out of the 25, 23 actually passed the interview to, for us to come back and start the other part of the background investigation and filter through, getting data. And, and that's what resulted in us having a solid nine now actually in our academy right now.
Well, I just want to say thank you. I know that the police business is a difficult business, not just here in Cumberland County, but across the globe. And we, we thank you for our men and women for what they're doing.
Thank you.
And the citizens keep the pressure on us, so we're going to keep the pressure on you all. And we just thank you all. So thumbs up for tonight. Thank you for your report.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember here. Councilmember Benavente.
If you could turn to page 12 on that document, on that report. I was curious about the license plate reader technology and the 126 misdemeanors. Could you speak at all to generally what sort of misdemeanors we're talking about?
Yeah. I know Chief Nollet gave that, I'm gonna pull it up, that example when he went fast through the presentation. You ready to give the misdemeanors?
So like I said, we don't utilize the LPRs or anything to do any type of traffic enforcement. We, it was part of the violent crime initiative that was approved by council last year. And what it, you know, there's ancillary charges whenever we pull a car over, whether if they are actually driving a stolen motor vehicle. You know, there may be a careless and reckless charge attached to that based on the initial stop. That's an actual misdemeanor charge. The possession and operation of the stolen motor vehicle is the felony charge. So when we look at some of the misdemeanor charges associated with the LPR arrests, they may come in the form of, these were secondary to the actual possession of the stolen motor vehicle. If you look, there's some, there's some actually drugs that have been seized on there. So some actual drug violations, whether it's drug paraphernalia, things like that, may fall into that misdemeanor category as well. But as far as being targeted, the misdemeanors are secondary to the, the initial charge, which has been the reason for the stop.
So none of the 126 were for expired license, lack of license, or anything like that, that then led to seizure of narcotics?
No. None, again, I can't stress that enough. We don't enter vehicles into the LPR system for, we manually put vehicles in. If there's a larceny of a motor vehicle, the reporting officer will come back and actually enter that data into the LPR license plate reading system. And then actually, they'll get alerts and hits based on when that car is observed passing through one of the license plate reader cameras.
Or page 15?
And, and for further clarity, I'm gonna get to that. For further clarity, this is not hooked up to our state system that says, hey, this is an expired tag vehicle, go find it. So this is information. So 15, go ahead.
You mentioned the one in four cars that are broken into that firearms are being procured. Are those folks who left their Are those folks who left their weapon unsecured actually being charged for having an unsecured? Is there a reason for that?
They are actually victims.
Okay.
That would be a law change, or?
There's no, there's no statute now for having an unsecured weapon?
No, sir, not in the, in the house, yes, not in the vehicle.
On page 18, this is the last one, y'all, I appreciate my colleagues' patience with me. On page 18, how many of the departmental investigations led to disciplinary outcomes?
I'll let Major Joyce answer that.
As we talk about those departmental investigations, the only things that would be considered public record under North Carolina General Statute are those disciplinary actions that result in a suspension, a demotion, a transfer, or a dismissal from the department. There's a number of times that we confer with the city's attorney's office and HRD when those types of requests come in, so that we are able to give out what is considered public record under North Carolina General Statute.
So we will pull, so we will pull from 2021, 2022, anyone who has been demoted, terminated, or what's allowable, and provide that to you in an email, okay?
Thank you so very much. And then, I think it was Assistant Chief Nollet that mentioned that first-line supervisor is one starting these departmental investigations, from sergeant to chief. Now, do the citizen complaints ever result in that same sort of hierarchy? A citizen complaint gets to a first-line supervisor who then gets it to the chief?
It depends on a citizen complaint. So depending on what the complaint is determines where it gets assigned. So if it's a, if it's like a criminal violation, it's not going to get assigned to the field for a field investigator, a field sergeant to investigate.
Can we say how many of those 22 citizen complaints became departmental investigations?
All of them. Every single one of those, all of these are, department investigations are investigated, citizen complaints, all of those are investigated. All of them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Benavente, Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, team. I'd like to make a motion to accept a federal police department review and report.
Second?
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins to accept the report seconded by Councilmember Ingram, discussion on the motion to accept. All right, council, those in favor, show of hands to accept the report. All right, Madam Clerk, is she unanimous? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to add two things before I leave, just so you share. I did meet and call the U.S. Attorney's Office, so we're, we're going to have, be in partnership to enhance our, our relationship, our federal relationship, so we're going to start a violent criminal apprehension program here, connected to Prosser Lake Neighborhood, and so we've got already a MOU, get ready to start it with all the partners to really focus on repeat offenders, so that's about to start really soon. And we also, just so that, because we've seen a lot of success in taking weapons off the road, so we're going to spend in September a little bit of asset forfeiture funds and do a gun buyback. So expect to see that coming out in September, where in our community, we'll do a gun buyback program, just letting you know that, okay?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I was trying to motion for discussion, but I did just want to briefly say, I went back and looked, and some of the organizations, life-changing mentoring wasn't there, so sorry about that. I want to correct myself when I'm wrong, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, Chief, thank you, Council. Council, we'll look, take a 10-minute break, and then we'll get into legislative hearings. All right, good evening. Council, we'll call the meeting back in session. Item 9.0 has been, has been removed from the legislative hearings, so we are, are at 10.0, the public hearing. Public hearing follows. We're getting ready to hold a public hearing where the city council formally seeks your input. Individuals designed to speak at the hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before the start of tonight's meeting. We begin with the staff presentation, we'll move into the formal hearing. 15 minutes will be allowed for those in favor or those, and those opposed to the item of the hearing. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, unless by a previous arrangement a single spokesperson has been designated, which case that spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. When the city clerk calls your name at the conclusion of the presentation, please come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address you would like to use for the record, and you may then address the council. 30 seconds, you'll be, you'll hear a warning, and at the end of your time, you, a lot of time, you'll hear, you'll be notified that the time is up. So with that, we'll yield to you, Ms. Baptiste.
Good evening, I'm Jennifer Baptiste. I am the Planning and Zoning Division Manager. The first case I have for you tonight is case AX2205. The owner of the, of the property is Appleton Salt LLC. The applicants are Ralph Huff III and David Van Neis. The request is to annex one parcel. This case is related to item 22, P22-23, which was on the consent agenda, is to rezone the property from Cumberland County Plan Neighborhood Development to the City of Fayetteville Single Family Ten on Conditional Zoning. The property is located off of Saddle Ridge Road and consists about 31.01 acres, and it would be located in District 1 if annexed. The property is contiguous with the City of Fayetteville city limits. The intended land use is to develop at least 38 lots, single-family residential lots. The reason for annexation is to access the City of Fayetteville services and to fill in a donated hole within the city limits. As you can see from the vicinity map, the property is located in the hashed area right here, is just south of Hampton Ridge Road and off of Saddle Ridge Road. This is the access, the unopened access to Saddle Ridge Road, which would access the This annexation is contiguous with the current city limits. The, the area is owned by the person who signed the petition, and city, the city can provide services to the area as well as PWC. Staff recommendation is to adopt the annexation ordinance with effective date of August 22, 2022. Your other options are to adopt the annexation ordinance with effective date of December 27, 2022, or an effective date of December 27, 2023, not to adopt the annexation ordinance or to table the annexation requests. That's staff's presentation. We ask that you hold any questions for staff until after the public hearing is closed.
Thank you, Ms. Baptiste. So with that, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
We have no speakers for this item.
All right, so with that, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I make my motion, I do want to say that the developer did go out and meet with the community, so the community is not surprised about what is going on, they have been informed. My understanding, there will be about 38 homes that will be in line with the neighborhood. And again, before I make my motion, I do have to put this on the record. Again, we are putting more homes into the Kings Grant neighborhood. The neighborhood is, of course, they don't want homes behind them, but they understand that it has to happen, but what they don't understand is there's only one way in and one way out. We continue to work on it, and I appreciate that the city council put in the budget that we would be working on all of our neighborhoods here in the city to rectify, rectify the issues that we have with one way in and one way out. So with that being said?
Councilmember Jensen, I did have a question for you. Go to your motion.
All right, I will wait.
All right, I'll circle right back to you. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, so you added a question to my list, so I, I'm interested to understand, we had an item that came before us very recently within the same neighborhood where citizens were very, in my perspective, outraged about the development and that there was one way in and one way out. And the developer came back and stated that they would do a stubout. And with this development, from my understanding, that there is a stubout, but it is And with this development, from my understanding, that there is a stubout, but it is not accessible because of wetlands, which essentially still creates a one-way in, one-way out. So this is another, uh, subdivision of homes that will be added to this community, one way in, one way out. And I also understand that there is a perspective that in some communities, they feel like it's safer, um, because it, I guess they understand who's coming in and who's, um, coming out. But I do want to understand, one, what changed from this outrage, if within the same neighborhood, versus now of it being acceptable and there is still no sub-stubout with this one, um, at least not an acceptable one? And then secondly, City Manager Hewitt or Ms. Olivera, can you express to me what type of funding we put in the budget for this? Because it was, it's, it's a bit of new information to me, and I think we need to help and get up out of here.
Um, well, I'll let, um, I started in, um, we are currently, I think, Adam or Byron, um, conducting a study to look at, um, uh, the connectedness of our neighborhoods, to see, um, where we have neighborhoods that have one way in and one way out. Um, and, um, that is a funded study, and I think it is actually underway at the moment. And we'll be coming back with recommendations hopefully within Adam, uh, early next year, probably.
Okay, thank you, and I, I live in a one-way in, one-way out community where we could easily just open up the other end. And so I, I just wanted to make sure, but I also want to understand what has changed with this community morale and...
Nothing's changed, no- nothing's changed and everybody upset that there's one way in or one way out. What happened to us a month ago is that we understand, the community understood that houses would be built there. They were very upset that there was one way in and one way out. The community, we sat together and talked to the developer, and they left a stubout. So at least we have a possibility to have a, another way out of that, that part of the neighborhood. What happened ten years ago is the developer did not leave a stubout to even give an option to get out of the neighborhood. So what I will say to you is the community worked together that they knew the houses were gonna be built. Something was gonna be built there, and it was gonna be houses, and I think everybody in the neighborhood agreed if anything was gonna be built there, they wanted, um, single-family homes to be built there. But working and having the conversation with the developer that we have saved a stubout to work our way through to figure out, and you are correct, there are wetlands there. It should have been done ten years ago. Um, you know, we, we have to get a lot of people involved to make it happen, but that, that is where we are. Um, so nothing has changed with the aspect of that. This, um, this part of the community is, um, on private streets, if I'm not mistaking, behind, and there is a stubout for this, um, too. So, did I answer that question?
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, if there is no further, okay, I would like to make a motion. I make a motion that we adopt the annexation ordinance, um, with an effect date of August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, and include approval of the final action consistent with the recommendation of the zoning commission.
Thank you, there's a motion by Mayor Pro- uh, Councilmember Jensen, uh, to approve, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins. Uh, further discussion on the motion. All right, those in favor, show of hands. All right, uh, that, those opposed? All right, Madam Clerk, that is nine to one, those voted in opposition, Councilmember Ingram. All right, motion carries. Item eleven point zero, uh, Ms. Baptiste, oh, you have another one, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Getting ahead of myself, getting too excited.
Um, this is case, case number AX twenty-two dash zero six. This is another annexation, it is, um, the owner of the property is Charles Graham Johnson. The applicant is Mr. Dell Crawford. This is an annexation of one parcel that is related to case number P twenty-two dash twenty-five, which again, was approved on consent agenda. Um, is to rezone Cumberland's, um, from Cumberland County's commercial with a plan and manufacturing with a plan to the City of Fayetteville's Community Commercial, um, CC zoning district. The location of this property is off of Cedar Creek Road, and it's approximately seventy-two point nine one acres, and it is in District Two. The annexation is contiguous with the city limit lines. Um, the development is, the proposed development is for multifamily residential development and a multi-use recreational facility. Um, the, the reason for annexation is for access to the City of Fayetteville services. As you can see from the vicinity map, um, this parcel is off of Cedar Creek Road. It is accessed off of Bureau Drive and Jim Johnson Road, and it is just adjacent to the I ninety-five south, um, roadway. As you can see from pictures, this is the access off of Jim Johnson, and this is the access off of Bureau Drive. This annexation is contiguous with the city limit lines. The owner is, um, the person who signed the petition. Um, city departments can provide services as well as PWC. Your options for tonight are to adopt the annexation ordinance with an effective date of August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, um, adopt the annexation ordinance with an effective date of December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, or December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, or do not adopt the annexation petition, or table the action on the requested annexation. Staff is recommending that the annex, um, the annexation goes through with an effective date of August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. That is staff's presentation, we ask that any question be held until after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Baptiste, so with that, we will open the public hearing, Madam Clerk.
Uh, we have no speakers for this item.
All right, that will close the public hearing, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, adopt the proposed ordinance annexing the area effective August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, and establish the initial zoning consistent with the zoning commission recommendation.
Motion by Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Councilmember Hare. Uh, discussion on the motion, all right, council, those in favor, show of hands. All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous, motion carries. Uh, item eleven point zero one, uh, vote yes, fellow citizen initiative petition resolution, uh, Ms. Baptiste, you presenting that?
Mr. Mayor.
Howardly.
Just come and get my stuff. Mr. Mayor, ten point zero three.
Thought I pulled that.
No, sir, we have to actually, um, vote to table it.
At the approval of Jenny, you didn't, y'all didn't remove it?
No, sir, we only did nine point zero one.
All right, all right, so, item ten point oh three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we table item ten point zero three, um, until September twenty-sixth.
All right, this item was tied to the item under consent, tabled to twenty-sixth. Motion by Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Councilmember Hondros, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, those in favor, show of hands. All right, Madam Clerk, unanimous, uh, item eleven point zero one, vote yes. Citizen petition, um, Madam Attorney, can I give us a little background?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, it's your August eighth meeting. There was a question regarding the validity of the petition that had been submitted by the, uh, vote yes group. Consistent with that, council directed that I contact the Board of Elections to inquire about the validity of the petition. I did that on August the ninth, that letter is included in your packet. I then received a response from the interim director, uh, Board, for the Board of Elections on August the sixteenth. That letter is also in your packet. And at this point, Mayor, appears particularly based on the response, there, there remains a question regarding, uh, the validity of the petition that was submitted to the city council for consideration.
Thank you, Madam Attorney, uh, Councilmember Benevente.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, per the city attorney's comments, as well as North Carolina general statute, I move that Fayetteville City Council does not proceed with this referendum on the November ballot.
I second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Benevente, seconded by Councilmember Thompson. Uh, discussion on the motion, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, City Attorney, it appears in our packet that the letter confirming the petition is valid. Do you have any, uh, comments on that?
What Ms., uh, Amaro said, uh, spare with me one minute, uh, in response to my letter...
Yeah, 'cause I don't...
What she said, specifically, my question was pursuant to statute one sixty-three dash two eighteen. That statute requires that a copy of the notice of circulation and the date of registration be filed with the Board of Elections, and Ms. Amaro confirmed that, uh, no such, uh, registration or notice of circulation was submitted. Given the statute, as I previously stated, the statute says that that is required, so therefore, there remains a question as to the validity of the petition.
All right, and then just one more question, um, is there any case law on that statute, one sixty-eight dash one oh four?
One sixty-eight dash one oh four is the statute that deals with, uh, the changing, uh, charter amendments. I don't know that there is any, um, case law on that. I think, uh, when we talk about case law, uh, the discussion was about the case law. There is no case law as it relates to one sixty-three dash two eighteen, and whether it applies to these types of petitions.
So, we, we don't know if the statute applies to the petition, is that your guidance?
That's, no, my guidance is that, uh, when you look at one sixty-three dash two eighteen, uh, it says that a notice of circulation of a petition calling for any election or referendum shall be registered with the County Board of Elections, in which the petition is to be filed, and the date of registration of the notice shall be the date of issuance and commencement of circulation of the petition. And so because we have not received that, because the council has not received that, it appears to me to be a legitimate question as to the validity of the petition.
And then, we got some correspondence from, uh, Attorney Morefield, is that right? And what was the gist of his...
I have not received any correspondence from, uh, Attorney Morefield. I had a cor- uh, excuse me, a conversation with him, uh, in which he said, um, that the notice of circulation did not exist.
All right, thank you. My, my, my concern on this is it appears that the petition was valid, and there also appears there's a problem, um, with the, um, the petition itself. And, um, Mr. Mayor, since there's, there's no case law on any of this, and I think, you know, the chances are that, um, there'll probably be litigation either way, so, um, I wanted to let the people decide and let the people vote, but, um, I understand the, the, uh, the concern the council has. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, council, any other discussion on the Benevente Thompson motion?
May.
Uh, uh, Councilmember.
I would, I'd like to close this discussion and call for the vote.
Question, all right. Yeah, typically, uh, we, we do try to show preference during the discussion phase, Ca- uh, Councilmember Hondros.
As I mentioned earlier, thank you, Mr. Mayor, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we all campaigned on transparency and accountability, and personally, I campaigned on, uh, being the voice of the people, and I believe a referendum is the epitome of the voice of the people, so I don't know how we can not let them decide. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, um, so, council, any, any other discussion, uh, on the matter? We have a motion on the floor, Benevente Thompson, motion. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes, this is to, uh, deny placement of the resolution. Those, those in favor, show of hands. All right, Madam Clerk, that is voted in favor, Councilmember Benevente, Banks, McGlaughlin, Colvin, Hare, Thompson, Ingram. Those voting opposed, councilmembers Hondros, McNair, uh, Jensen, and Dawkins. Motion carries six to four. All right, uh, Councilmember Ingram, you had an item, she wanted to move under twelve point oh?
Yes, sir, I'd like to, um, this needs to be in a motion, City Manager?
Just, just direction.
Okay, City Manager, I'd like to move item twelve point zero two, reveal city council policies to a, uh, upcoming work session whenever, uh, we can get it scheduled.
All right, you got, all right, council, motion to a jury? All right, good evening.